Any opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One last thing, this is a brochure that the Arkansas-
What is that anyway?
Thank you.
Big fingers.
We're trying to help the story of the power of the arts and particularly of Eureka Springs in that is local information that we did do through a survey of local artists performing visual culinary literary last year, so we hope to get those out to businesses and to other organizations. And if you need more, please call. Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Senator. Okay. There's nobody yet on public comments? We've got first item taken care of. Guess we'll enter into unfinished business. This will be the third reading of Domestic Fowl Ordinance 2139. Motion discussed?
Well, I'd just go ahead and move to place ordinance number 2139 on its third reading by title only. Suspend rules and place ordinance number 2139 by title only on its third reading.
Second?
Second.
Seconded? Any discussion first? Ms. Balance?
Had a discussion with Mr. Morris from the Planning Commission several days ago, and he was quite upset that we had made changes to 6.06.06 inspection. If I understand correctly what he was trying to get across to me, he wanted this section to have more teeth? If I understand correctly, he wanted... He didn't want the animal control officer to just be able to go onto anybody's property at any time for making inspections and stuff. He wanted it to be if there had been complaints or if there was some reason for the animal control officer to suspect that there was a problem with how the fowl were being kept and so forth. So, I just wanted to bring that forward, and maybe we could discuss it and talk about it and maybe change it back to how he wanted it. I don't know. But I assured him that I would bring it forward, and perhaps we could talk about it.
Any further discussion on it? Mr. DeVito?
Was that a motion from the Planning Commission or just an individual member?
An individual member expressed his concern.
Is there anything else to the... Other than the handout you gave us over to this one? Okay. Mm. Yeah, we're still in discussion phase, so before we read it. All right. Motion made and opened and seconded to by ballot title only. Suspend rules and by ballot title only. It'd be a roll call, but wouldn't it?
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2139 and ordinance regulating the keeping of domestic fowl within the corporate limits of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and amending chapters of Title VI in the municipal code of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas regarding keeping of domestic fowl.
Mr. DeVito?
I move to approve ordinance number 2139 on its third reading.
Second?
Second.
Motion made to approve. To read the ordinance on its third reading?
To approve on the third reading?
Yeah, on the third reading. Made and seconded. All in favor?
Discussion?
Okay, go ahead.
Discussion?
Yeah. This is when we discussed it. First time. Go ahead.
Perhaps we could agree to change 60606 and add and change it to the animal control officer designated is authorized to enter upon any premises, public or private, for cause, for the purpose of making inspections to determine if the provisions of the article are being violated? Anybody have any comments on that? Is everybody comfortable with the animal control officer just being able to go on anybody who's keeping fowl's property anytime they want?
Only with cause. I think it's what it is.
That's what I'd like to see it say. That's what I'd like to see it say.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it already says that. It says for the purpose of making inspection to determine if the provisions of this article are being violated. That tells me it's for cause. He can't just walk up and just say, "I want to see your chickens."
That's what this says, right now?
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
It says, "I've got to determine if you're making it... if there's a violation." I don't think he... You know, the animal control isn't going to go up and check, count your chickens.
Well, you know, hopefully.
Mr. DeVito?
That's akin to the health inspector coming in my restaurant. I mean, you know, he comes in a couple, three times a year whenever he wants and checks out my restaurant. And if you are receiving the benefit of keeping fowl in the city limits, then, you know, I don't see any difference. It is a sanitary issue. Histoplasmosis is a very serious disease, so, you know, I think it's well within our purview of health, safety, and welfare of the community that, you know, they can be inspected on an irregular basis. I mean, they've got to keep their places clean at all time.
Yeah, it's like your driver's license, your subject, all the rules and regs if you have a driver's license. You still have to have probable cause to enter into. Any further discussion? All right. This has to be... Doesn't have to be a roll call, though. This isn't something... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carry. Third reading. All right. Number two. Deer hunt decision regarding November date. I'm not aware of the November date, so you almost discussed this in my absence, so... Because the last date I gave was the October date. Motion to discuss?
So, no.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. DeVito?
We talked that October is such a busy season with tourists, and it might be a matter of safety if we waited until the leaves were off the trees, which is why we chose a November date.
Okay. Any further? Mr. Berry?
I think there's a question, Mr. Mayor, and it was brought up by one of the people that spoke public comments last time, whether or not the one-time hunt is really a one day or one time. And my talking to other communities that have the urban hunt, one day is just not sufficient to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. And I would like to see us to have at least a five-day hunt from Monday through Friday. And that's still... Even with the game and fish, that's still considered a one-time hunt. And the reason I say Monday through Friday, and what I'm proposing is November 28th through the 2nd, December the 2nd, is because that's after Thanksgiving, the leaves are off the trees. It's a quiet time in our town.
What was the date in December?
It's 11th, 28th through 12/02.
12/02, okay.
It's still... It's a week during the week. It's not on the weekends. So, again, for, you know, if there are any visitors or anything around, we still wouldn't be imposing on that. But I think that, from what I'm hearing from game and fish and other communities, a minimum of five days naturally should go on, but I'm hoping to get at least a five-day hunt out of it to be able to control the population of the deer.
That'll be decided here. Any further discussion? Ms. Balance?
Well, for clarification and to allay concerns, it does say in ordinance calling for an election to refer the issue allowing a one-time bow and arrow deer hunt, regulated by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission. We've discussed a lot of things, and I know that some people's personal property is going to be used so forth. Is... Is this truly regulated by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission? Do we feel comfortable that this is regulated by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission?
It's regulated not in a come-to-your-city-and-being-present while it's going on. It's regulated by the rules they have set down for the whole entire state.
Okay, well, it says down here in Section 2, the said bow and arrow hunt would be according to the regulations promulgated and timed set by the Arkansas Fish and Game Commission. So, I know you explained that as they have a hunting season, and this will be within that hunting season.
Yeah, within those dates.
So, that is...
Specific dates.
Regulations promulgated and time set. Within the areas prescribed by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission. I don't think the areas that we're going to be using are... Have been prescribed by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission.
Well, we're prescribed to Section 1 in their map. There's... If you have a... And I don't have it before me, but in their map, they have the state broken into sections, and we're in Section 1. Our hunting season opened here on 10/1 of 2011 and ends 2 of 29/2012. I did break that down in here. Start 30 minutes before sunrise and 30 minutes until 30 minutes after sunset.
So, you're comfortable that private property within the city is equal to within the areas prescribed by the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission?
Absolutely.
You're comfortable with that? You're on record being comfortable with that?
Well, it's within the area, so as long as the property owner says you can come on my property and hunt, then the property owner takes the liability.
Okay, thanks.
That's my understanding of it. Any further? All right. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion then that we established one time, and I would like to clarify this as a longbow, not a crossbow, but longbow hunt between... On the day starting 11/28 through 12/2. As per Arkansas Game and Fish regulations. Longbow? What do you mean? We've talked about longbow versus crossbow. Yeah, but I'm afraid we're... We've talked about longbow.
I think we passed it.
Anyway, that's my motion.
We passed that.
Is there a second? Okay.
Second.
Yeah, let's get a second on it. Okay, now go ahead. You can regulate what they use inside the city.
Okay.
That's my understanding of what the game and fish says. You just can't use any kind of weapon that fires a ballistic round. Or that muzzleloader.
Resident number one might have told some buddies that to come over, there's going to be a hunt here, and, you know, who knows what they think they're going to use, you know? You can't be out there regulating everyone.
See, all of this goes back... Yeah, all of this goes back to the fact that when we first started this thing, we made contact with Arkansas Game and Fish. They said, "Since we do not have enough public land for them to come up and set up a regular urban hunt like they do in Hot Springs Village or another big... Bigger municipality that has a lot of public land," they said, "You're kind of on your own, so if your private property owners say that people can hunt on them, then you go with that."
Is there going to be a notice in the paper, you know, saying from November 28th to December 12th and longbow only?
We can definitely post one.
That would be helpful, I would think.
Mr. Pannell?
Clarification, I thought the only thing that we were still in debate over was the date, all of the other rules, signing up here at City Hall, all that, the advertising. All we were waiting for was the date. Is that not correct?
That was my understanding. We had everything set up last time. Y'all just didn't like the date. I had. So, we've got a motion on the floor unless you're going to amend it.
Can I make another comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We can go ahead and further expand, you know, with our... Any type of regulations that we want. I mean, I don't even need to clarify. I mentioned the longbow just to get it out for everybody to be aware of. There's more. But again, we can, you know, the rest of the regulations, we can come back in with another motion later on, but definitely the dates is what I'm concerned about. And actually, the longbow. I mean, but I'm willing to, you know...
We're already starting to find crossbow boats.
Yep.
I found one down on Grim Street the other day when I went down.
You won't find too many arrows with a longbow.
I just think the majority of the bow hunters in the area are crossbow hunters.
You can regulate what they use inside the city limits, because you can do that by ordinance anyway.
But that's, you know...
Okay. So, your motion is a Monday through Friday, longbow, a five-day longbow hunt from 11/28/11 to 12/02/11. Is that correct? Mr. Pannell?
I know we've discussed this at the table, and I think most of us understood what was being said. Should this not be put in some type of a resolution setting the date and the rules as far as following through on what the voters voted on? Or do we just assume that all the rules are going to be followed based on who's reading what where?
You can put it in a resolution if you want to. You've still got time, plenty of time. So, if Mr. Berry will amend his motion to include it be done by resolution, or we can deal with that one and then come back?
At this point, I should like to get the date down, and then if we want... I think it probably needs to be a resolution, but if we want to go ahead and talk about the rules and regs, we can even have a workshop on that. It's basically getting the dates down for people to be aware of it, and then we can fine tune it as we want.
Motion on the table is the Monday through Friday, five-day longbow hunt, 11/28/11 through 12/211. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Okay. I didn't hear you. Made and seconded? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Present.
Okay.
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
You have three votes.
Who voted yes? And what's yours?
No, I'm sorry. Four.
What's your vote?
Sorry, no.
Motion carry. All right. Next on the agenda is a dog control workshop. I wasn't here at the last, but Mr. Pannell added that one up, so I'll defer to him.
Now, we had a workshop on the 28th. Two council president, two concerned citizens, and the biggest issue before we spend any more time on making the recommended changes is enforcement. And that seems to be the biggest concern, even in talking with the animal control officer who is a contract employee of the police department. He doesn't want to see us go overboard on this, and we don't necessarily want to go overboard on it, but at the same time, there's really some concern about enforcement and the next steps because apparently, and Mr. Raphael, help me out here in case I misaddress this, there have been some tickets issued, court dates set, and apparently, it's kind of blipped off of the radar after that and nothing being done.
I would like...
Mr. Weaver?
I'd like some clarification on what you mean by that. There have been dog cases that have been prosecuted. There have been convictions issued over the last couple of years over dog violations. I'm not sure what you're saying about a blipping off the district court. Once a case is brought in the district court, it's seen through to the end, whether it's guilty or not guilty or some kind of other resolution. So, if there's some evidence that something is disappearing, I'd really like to be interested in knowing that.
Maybe the concern is what other resolutions are there, because there's some feelings that there isn't much being done.
I heard... We heard stories of... I think it says that if it's a vicious dog, it has to leave the city limits, is what it seemed to say to me. And it went through the court system. I don't even know if they were fined, but the dog was back where it was, same thing going on, and it just seems like there's a lack of enforcement, you know? And you could write it, put all the teeth in it you want. If it's not enforced, you know, people are just constantly given warnings. There has to be some teeth in these issues. And that's what we heard from the citizens that were there.
There really isn't that much that needs to be changed in the ordinance itself, other than tightening up, pardon the pun, the leash. You know, there's some leeway that would indicate that some people consider their dog under control by voice and that the need needs to be under control by the leash and how long the leash is and how far the dog has to be away from the person. But again, the majority, even in the first workshop and the one that we just had, was the concern of enforcement.
Mr. DeVito?
I didn't make the last workshop, but from the first one, I mean, it was a concern that the leash law be tightened up, that it not be under control of the owner by voice command, but it be a physical restraint of the dog. And I think that goes a long way with a lot of people. That doesn't leave a gray area of a judgment call on the part of the animal control officer. It's black and white. Right now, you've got a gray area there.
The concern was not necessarily stopping at the animal control officer level. They feel that he is doing his job when called, but they're... The feeling was that it wasn't going any further. It may have been over the last two years that these cases have been adjudicated, but the reference was the one, I believe, that the dog killed the other dog?
Yes.
That it... Basically, there wasn't anything done.
Ah, please, notations written on that and pending adjudication, okay? Mr. Weaver?
If I am understanding which case they're referring to, it is pending before the court. It will be addressed when it's properly brought to the docket for trial. If it's the one I'm thinking of, but there have been others that have reached
And where's the dog?
The ultimate decision.
Where's the dog?
You can't do with your ordinance anything with a dog till it's adjudicated vicious.
I'd like... Before we go any further with the ordinance of which it's not going to take that long to...
And there have been dogs removed... I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk about it. But there have been dogs removed from the city by viciousness.
Mr. Raphael?
Pretty much all we can do is maybe tweak it a little bit and pass it, and that's all we can do.
Take it back to your workshop?
I don't know if we need to take it back to workshop, but don't you...
We'll just keep working on it.
You have the ideas, I know.
Any further?
I'd like to see it remain on the unfinished business.
Okay. Ms. Clerk can take care of that one. If there's no further on that one? All right, number four been postponed?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we get a report before we bug too far along of what cases from the city attorney, what cases are before the court? Is that possible to find out? How do you recommend we can... We've got citizenry that's concerned, and we don't have any information that we can give them hard and fast, that there's X number of cases, because they know that Mr. Evans has been writing tickets, but nobody's seeing any results. Is there any way we can close that loop?
I'm not sure how you want to close it. If you want to know which cases are pending at the court, the court has an extensive docket which lists each charge is there. I don't know if the clerk can prepare a docket that simply is dog violations or not, but you can certainly get the dockets. As to the one that is pending currently for trial, I believe it is set on the next trial docket in September, but I'll have to look at what...
Do you not represent the city on all those?
I do once they've reached the stage of plea discovery. If they are settled at arraignment, no. I am not authorized to participate in arraignment by Arkansas law.
That may be where some of the concern is, that they're getting... Taken care of there and nothing else is heard of.
Big job. Clerk across the hall over here would... Does all the municipal stuff and have that docket, that information. Ms. Lynda, we're showing. Anything else?
Not... We'll move on. Number four, Vacation Palapinto has been postponed. Number five, resolution of zoning appropriation, zoning map appropriation. Ms. Balance and Mr. Dr. Kirkpatrick, motion?
Move to discuss.
Aye.
Made and seconded? Table is open. It's down. Can you pick it up?
Have you perused this?
No.
You have not?
I have not seen the zoning.
It's in your folder.
Well, do you gave me it just before meeting?
I sent it to you. I showed it to you before the meeting, and it's in here.
It's in this folder that you gave me just before the meeting?
Yes. You chose the one with two sections.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood what you asked me. You're talking about the resolution to approve money?
Yes.
Wait, 200 dollars?
I've seen that. I thought it was something else. Sorry.
Ms. Passes muster?
It has been ran by Yvonne with the finance department, along with the director, and I believe it passes muster with her, and I believe that it will pass muster because it now has the particular number of where the money is being placed.
Yes.
She has the line item number for it. I won't tell you it's the right line item number, but she says it is, my understanding.
Okay, so you're comfortable with this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Since we've already discussed it, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
How come we took out the fact that it was being... The money was coming from the general fund?
I don't know. Section 2 says removed. I've got a sticker here.
That particular section, I understand that Ms. Klein says is not necessary, and I spoke with the clerk before the meeting, and we discussed that if the finance director does not think that's necessary, then this becomes law and must be published, if it is required to be published, that the last wording the city has to pay for.
So, then I'm confused. Which copy are we looking at?
The one that has two sections as opposed to three.
One and two. One with a note on it.
They're identical, other than the direction of where the money is actually coming from. The finance department says that they understand that the money would have to come from the general fund, not from one of the capital funds or other foundations. Although, you can use either one. I understand that the finance... That Ms. Klein is okay with either one. Trying to save a nickel for the city.
No comment.
How are we saving money by taking out the section that says where the money is coming from versus not saying?
Creating.
Creating costs.
It has to be posted.
Legal notices published at, I believe, this county 80-some cents or word.
Well, we're stepping over a dollar to pick up a dime all the time, so I don't think that makes a whole lot of difference. I'd like to see Section 2 that says that the fund shall be moved from the general fund. I'd like to see that stayed. And I'd like to change "removed" to "moved." That way, it's very clear where it's coming from and where it's going. And I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Is that a motion? To amend the ordinance?
Yes.
All right, restate it, please.
I move to use the copy that has three sections and to change Section 2 to say that the fund shall be moved from the general fund.
to say that the fund shall be moved from the general fund.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on it? Okay, no further discussion? Call for a vote, Mr. Pownell.
Is this our discussion part or we're going further?
Well, we've been discussing it.
We haven't given it a number yet.
That's what I mean.
We haven't given it a number.
Go ahead.
Any further discussion? All right, motion to sign the number?
But don't we have to vote on the motion that I have on the table to change this Section 2? That's the motion on the table, I do.
All right, the motion is to change.
To use this.
To use the three-section resolution with the re, in front of removed, change to indicate moved. Where it states that the fund shall be moved from general fund, is that correct? All right, and there's a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we vote on that one? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Pownell?
Make a motion, we sign a number to the resolution, read the resolution for budget adjustment as amended.
Second.
Made in seconded? Sign the number?
The number will be 584. Resolution 584, a resolution.
Did we vote?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
All right, all in favor, accept the resolution as amended and numbered 584.
Was that, was that the motion? Was that your motion?
To give it a number and to read.
Sign the number, read as amended.
I thought you said to, had approved and, or accept or something.
The motion is give a number and read as amended.
Read as amended, yeah.
Can you second?
What was amended?
Just that.
Put, put Section 2 back in and we removed, removed, removed and changed it to moved.
Yeah, that's it. And it numbered 584 too.
I said the number too soon, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion on this, think what we're voting on? All right, as amended, resolution 584. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Are you reading it?
Yes.
Resolution 584, a resolution making a 2011 budget adjustment. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has determined that the 2011 fiscal budget should be amended. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section 1, that the following line items be increased by council request. Non-departmental planning commission line item 01005710 be increased by eighteen dollars for the zoning map. Section 2, that the funds shall be moved from the general fund. Section 3, upon passage of this resolution, all changes will be entered into the main street accounting program and general ledger.
I move to approve this resolution.
That's it.
I did, by reading it.
It's a resolution.
Yeah, once it's done.
Okay. Number 7 was deleted, procedure failing vacate council seat, Mr. DeVita on the page.
Number 6.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Discussion alcohol, that's right. Discussion of alcohol beverage tax, it's got my name on it, but I'll have to defer to Ms. Clerk and Mr. Weaver since they've been working on it.
Okay, where are we? Okay. Progress. Excuse me. With, all the lists that the city has for beverage licenses have been cross-checked with the information that was obtained from the ABC regarding their multiple lists. I did deliver city alcohol beverage tax form to one more restaurant. One of the restaurants owner, restaurant owner showed me his CAPC tax form. And I found that in those monthly tax forms, the deductions are for, person can deduct the gross sales of liquor, but on those forms, a person is to report 3% on beer and wine. So I started thinking about that. If the city is not able to collect tax on beer and wine sales, how is it that the CAPC is allowed to do? So I called another ABC lawyer, Mr. Bennett. We talked about it for a while. He referred me to the municipal league. On July 28th, I sent Mr. Schoen an inquiry about that. Told him that the, no, and that's in a packet that I just gave Mr. Weaver. Since then, the people at the CAPC have gathered all the information they have, trying to help me understand where in their enabling legislation they are given the power to collect tax on beer and wine sales in town. And there, it's not clear. There are gaps in that information. So I've passed everything I have from the CAPC onto Mr. Weaver because I really don't have time to deal with it and it's, it's more of an attorney's thing anyway. So that's where that one is. In the present, I'm continuing to call restaurant owners when I have any time to see what their understanding is and what they are doing. In the future, my plan is to make up spreadsheets for those who pretty much every month, send in payments after the 20th, but still take the discount. So sometimes I just prepare little spreadsheets and show them why each month they owe a little bit more, send them a letter explaining, and generally they are gracious about paying the difference. And the other thing I hope to make progress on is to notify people who are behind in payments generally. That's where that is.
So you have a thing in?
I did receive from the clerk, the information that she has in regard to the CAPC. I do not think there's a problem from the initial looking at it, but I will delve into it further. She contacted me about four or five days ago and asked me to start looking at it and we did some preliminary looking at that point. But I don't think that there's a problem. It's not that the city cannot collect a tax on beer and wine. It's a different tax structure and a different tax method. And I'll try to report back to you if you so desire when we make a little more determination of what that is. And she gave me everything she had, I think, a couple hours ago and we'll go from there. I appreciate her footwork in what she's done.
Any further? Let me throw in a little, another little note here. I was notified by one of the local hotels today that in our city ordinance, referring to liquor sales on Sunday between the hours of 12 noon and 12 PM, if the hotel and motel and restaurant obtain the state or city license. I believe the state has currently changed that to say 10 AM to 10 PM. To, I'm sorry. From 10 AM to 12 AM on Sunday, where Sunday sales are allowed in wet areas. So that'll need to be changed in the code book.
Would you repeat that again, I'm sorry?
Okay. Local hotel called me concerned about our local, it's, let's see, seven, 7.08, .08 hours of sale, which it states that hotel, motel and restaurants with a city and state license can sell on Sunday between.